This work session, the Blue Ridge Town Council will now come to work. Would you please stand and join me for a moment. Our next councilman is Sowers.
The reasons to the flag of the United States of America. In the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Danielle, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Sandra Donkman?
Here.
Ms. Lillard?
Here.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
All right, Mr. Burke, read water meters.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to discuss the town's efforts at acquisition of remote read water meters. Brian's been working with Blue Ridge Bank and we've developed a plan for a loan of up to $750,000, which is based upon a $250,000 contribution from the town towards the water meters. The rate between the original time that we talked and the time that this came in has gone up and we're hoping that if council's amendable, we've scheduled a public hearing for your October meeting to authorize us to proceed with a loan with Blue Ridge to pursue the acquisition of the water meters. We have asked representatives from the town of Stanley to come in and talk with y'all and give you some of the good and bad of their transition to remote read water meters and give you the opportunity to ask any questions that you might have about their implementation.
Terry, thank y'all for coming tonight. We certainly appreciate it. Y'all have a presentation, Terry?
Yeah, I'll say a little something about what we did and then we'll take questions and answers. We have over, a little bit over 1,500 meters in 19. In 2015, we started looking at replacing the meters and as Steve just said, quite a job. We applied to rural development back then, of course, offer money was available. And we were fortunate enough to get a loan slash grant. And so we put the meters out for bid. We had a high bid of $500,000 and a low bid of $300,000. And the low bid, this was comparable to what we were looking for. So the bid was actually $414,000 and we accepted with $50,000 grant. Now through rural development, we borrowed $391,000 for 20 years. At that time, they promised that you will see an increase in revenue. And the reason why we saw an increase in revenue, number one is because Timber Center meters were broken. Timber Center meters were broken in 1,500. Second thing is, as meters get old, we all know, and Steve and Brian will tell you, they become inaccurate. So we thought, well, we'll take the gain in the water revenue and help make the payments on the system. So the advantage of the meter reader system we went with and we read by 1,500 is that we had four employees taking three days to read them. We read them now in two hours. And as soon as we turned the laptop on in front of the town, always it reads 200. But it does. It takes longer to turn around in the cul-de-sacs in streets than it does to read the meters. The other issues we had when it snowed, you know, we didn't read meters. When the bad weather example, tornage like that, you know, cars parked over them, bushes parked over them. The system reads through everything. Reads through snow, reads through rain, and everything like that. Our revenue increased $30,000 to $40,000 of lost revenue. We were losing on broken meters and inaccurate meters.
And it handled?
Doesn't yet. So it's a painless system. The new system, the company came in, we wish HD Waterworks, we wanted comparable to software that we had, which is Sunnyside Software. That was a key factor, make it comparable what we have. Sunnyside Software worked with all the companies that bid on it. They had no problem. And Leon's here, he's our IT person, and he can look right over. The biggest factor is that 99.9% of those meters are accurate. They can argue with you, they can argue with the office, everything. They are accurate. We just put one guy wrong today. He said he didn't have no leak. Yes, he did. He found his hot water heater before he left, you know? But they are accurate. It shows, it has a little faucet comes on the meter. The meter records itself every hour for nine days. So when we come in, we can do a printout. And people come in, they say, can I see my consumption last month? We can do that. It doesn't matter a second. We can do, he used this much last month. We can go back to a year now and say, in July, you used 14,000 gallons, just like you did this July. Now you can get back down to 11,000 like that. The printouts are invaluable. The accuracy of the meters, you know, they can argue with you, but we're correct. Do you have a leak? Maybe an intermittent leak or a leak that you fixed and didn't realize to tell us or things like that. And Steve talked to me about the downfall of it. The only downfall we've seen, and we're correcting this now, is number one is that the laptop reads out the meters. If we want to read one individual meter, we can't do that if I went through the system. So we have all a bell clip that waiting on system made, but you know how equipment is when you get it. So you go out, you swap a hundred meter, picks it up and go back in. You got that one meter. The other problem that we didn't realize, we've learned to, is that we've lost our meters. By not reading them for a year or two, they're covered up. Or the grass rolled over, the dirt's gone over them. You're not pulling, in separate cutoffs, you're not pulling over. So we just ordered a GPS system that we're going to buy ourselves that will, we could GPS every meter we have on 1,500 song and map them and it'll be within one foot of that meter. So without this one thing. The other issue we have that y'all may not have is that we put the whole system in at one time. We thought about doing it phases, but oh, let's do it all one time, get the revenue and pay for the system. The batteries are 10-year batteries, so it looks like those 10-year batteries may go out at the same time. We hope they don't. We hope they go out in little phases, you know? And that's the issue. We still got six years of that, yeah. But we would not create a system, I mean, you know, like I just said, it cut four employees three days to two employees, two hours, two and a half hours. And those guys go right back to working the public works.
So when you change the battery, Terry, is it, I mean, that can just be done pretty routinely?
Yeah, you just pull the tap off, put two batteries in.
You got 1,500 meters? What do we have, 28, 78, something?
25.
Danielle, do you know about it's about 24?
So what do you do? Do you actually take the old meter out for the new one in?
Yes. We change.
Your employees to do that? Some company came and did that for you?
We actually pulled the meter. We kept the old meters actually because of the old money for them. Because the company, nobody wanted them, you know? But yes, that's all. They put the new meter in, we took the old one out. It took one employee to put with them for about two months because he didn't want the meters around. And they follow them around. And of course, the hole, we got a hole he drilled with antennas on the top. Now, we do have some issues with Leon, I pointed today too. In summertime, people muddle over their antennas by accident, you know? But the antenna just goes on the lid, wire goes into the meter. That happens a couple times. And we've had some bad analysis there around the end to them.
The antenna actually sticks out of the lid?
It sticks out of the lid, but it's real thin.
Like a catch maybe?
Yeah. And we had a couple in streets, we had a problem and replaced my trickle. We just put the lid outside.
I've been reading about, and somebody, one of these sites said that between 0.5% to 1% per month had issues. Have you seen anything close to that? That seems really high, but that'd be 15, that'd be somewhere between 8 and 15 a month of the meters that either they break or they have your trouble shooting.
I'm going to have five or six a month, maybe.
Okay, so you're not, so nothing more? Okay, so point four.
And if you have a problem, just take the register off, send it back to the company, put it in. The base stays in.
Is the same people that we're dealing with, is this the same, or no company?
You're doing, you went with HD, HD Waterworks. Did they do a Neptune product for you?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Neptune is the brand we would like to do, but it looks like HD would be one of the builders. Core Man would probably be one of their core main now. And then Commonwealth, Consolde Pipe for a national meter, a couple of those. The Neptune products seem to be, that's what we have now, Neptune software, Neptune, a lot of Neptune meters and that seems to do a great job for us, so we'd love to talk about it with you.
Was there any lifetime with transition? How long did it go on?
Two months. We did it, what, 40, 50 a day? No human error, no rechecks. It's on the system, it's on the system.
And that's invaluable. When somebody comes in and says they have a leak, then you send somebody out to look at the meter. How long you look at to see if it starts moving? You have to worry about if somebody's home because they could be running washers, dry dishwashers. So we just, now it's like, get a printout, leak, three to seven days, seven to 10 days. You got a leak, so a lot of them ask us where it's at and we can't tell you that. We can tell you that you got water flowing through your meter for 36 hours straight.
You raise the lid, you put a flashlight on it, you wake it up. And this little faucet, it's a leak, it's a little faucet comes open. You'll see the numbers down to a gallon. It don't measure a gallon. And you'll see it move and it'll be on the printout. And you go back and say, you have a stool that's leaking or something like that. Or you have a major leak where it's really going.
But did you have any cases where people, water bills went way up and they were upset about it?
Yeah. Ours has an intermittent leak, which it does leak all the time. So stool, flapper gets stuck or, that's what we're guessing because we really don't know. Because normally pipes don't fix themselves, so the hardest ones are intermittent leaks because you don't, unless the customer is actually aware of everything, it's the exact time and like a month and a half is a hard time to remember if something got stuck. So that's the issue probably we have most. It's time to explain to the customer of the intermittent leak, which is not all the time. It's not a continuous leak.
And another question, you brought a good point, is with the new system, a lot of people were undercharged.
They were what?
Undercharged.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, they were undercharged. And then bills went up and they were accurate bills. And they didn't realize they were using that much water. It actually comes saved orders because people realized, well, I didn't know I was using that much water. And they cut back, so.
I'm guessing all that went, went away after several months of Peter?
Yeah. It still, that still rises sometimes.
You have.
Still don't think they use.
I think the program's wrong.
They do. But you have, you have this. You say, here's your usage for the last four months.
So the difference is now you don't have a paper that somebody wrote on versus something that you have a printout thing. We have a 20-page, because we have probably plus 19 pages of water leaks. They may be small water leaks, which some are, tiny pinholes maybe in your pipes. But there's a lot of water leaks. Now you sit there and say, here's your address. It's a continuous leak.
How many of those do you have in a month, say?
There's probably close to 50 on.
A month? And does people just not fixing their leaks?
Well, the question is, is how much of that? You're not going to spend $300 to fix a leak that's going to cost you a dollar a month. Because it, some of those senses are really, really sensitive. Because I've seen when I went out with the meter, it would have a flashing bulb and absolutely no water was going through the, at least measurable water going through the meter. It still said zero gallon per minute. So I don't know why that was that way and how many is doing that. But it may be sensitive where it just measures the trickle. So that's where a lot of those could be because a lot of those people aren't using a whole lot of water that's on that list.
But it sounds like y'all have no regrets whatsoever.
No, no, no. No, I mean, we, I mean, we have none. I mean, we have had, we have no broken meters for the last five or six years. Not a single broken meter either. Everybody's, and everybody is being recorded. Everybody, you know, it used to be, you know, meters broke and we didn't replace it for a couple of months because we're doing something else. Now, everybody's recorded. Now, we are replacing, now this is 3/4 inch, about 5'8" meters. We did not replace the 2-inch meters because they're very costly. So we do them every six months. And we only have like six left now, something like that. But the system does the same thing. It picks up 2-inch meters, 1-inch meters, or whatever you have.
You said it's a 20-year lifespan for that? Is that what it's, you can change by around 10 years? But a lifetime of a check?
Thank you all again for your time. No more questions, then?
Don't use a deal.
Enjoy your dinner. Make him pay you again. Super sad.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we have scheduled the town here for y'all's consideration of the town pursuing a loan. You don't have to act on it at the end of the meeting, but at least gives us the rubs ability to pursue that recognizing that there is a likelihood of interest rates continuing to increase. Staff would request consideration as soon as possible to authorize us to work with Blue Ridge Bank.
What was the total amount of this right now?
A little over a million, depending on.
Yeah, it seems like that goes up every day too, so.
Actually, the price, I mean, considering what they paid for 1,500 meters.
And they paid for that. We're going to be about, you know, a third to, you know, more than that at least.
Plus it's during.
And a few years ago that they did that. So looking at one that just went into place, Strasburg just started in July. And they have 2,600. And theirs is 1.1, 1.15 right now. And that was in July for a full. Now, they did the AMR system, so there's two systems. An AMR system is the ride-by, drive-by, walk-by type system. The AMI system is an antenna-based system. So basically, you push a button on a computer. It crads all meters within that antenna range, pulls them in the system, dumps them into the database. So it used to be that the cost differential between AMR systems and AMI systems was enormous. And you know, you really had to have a ton of money to, and a lot of meters to be able to afford the AMI system. Nowadays, that price differential's really close. And so most of the vendors will tell you, if you can afford remote measuring, try to go the AMI route first. If you absolutely cannot afford that, go to the AMR, but do an AMR plus where you could upgrade that to the antenna system at a later date. Unfortunately, most people don't ever do that and they don't ever get that benefit of the AMI system. So it's, Strasburg went with AMI. Jason's hometown Bridgewater just went with an AMI system. So we'll try and get information, you know, from them. But we're looking at about 1.15, somewhere in the 1.1 range right now for total cost as of right now.
Is that, did we look at 10 years on this?
10-year would be the note. We'd have one year of construction interest only draws like the construction loan and then we convert to a 10-year fixed rate for a payback, no prepayment penalty.
Monthly payment being on.
We pay monthly interest, but the annual payments, we would do 10 years of annual payments just because it's easier for Danielle to just write one check at the end of July for the year versus.
About $95,000 a year, right?
Roughly, yeah. We're just under 100 grand, yeah.
That does enter expand, expand the process.
Correct. Once we convert to the, but we want to fix fees for both. And if we do tax exempt, Jason was saying that revenue bond, Jerry, Mr. Shiro would cause us to need to configure with the RA because our water plant and this building and we place those revenue funds. And so now if we're going to place them somewhere else, we gotta redo all of that. Right, so he recommended the GO, but with going with tax exempt, you're about 1% lower on that 10-year note. So I would definitely recommend a tax exempt. That will cost us a little bit upfront, but we can roll that into the fines. So you get tax exempt depending from a bond cancel. We gotta do a bond cancel anyways, John, okay?
How much are the batteries that's locked up?
Batteries are not cheap, but like Terry said, you know, if you know that that 10-year limit is coming, the thing for us to do would be to use, like we talked about before, our plan would be to start year one, set aside some funds to go ahead and be able to acquire those battery sets as we work our way through that 10-year period. So we don't get a big sticker shock, you know, on year 10 when all of them go down. But it actually tells you, just Terry didn't mention that, but the meter will send a report in to the computer that says, hey, my battery's getting low. You need to come replace them. So the system's smart enough to know, to tell you that it needs maintenance. It not only works accuracy for the customer, it works backwards for us too. Tells us when it needs some or when we need to be thinking about it. So, you know, they're very easy to replace. The antennas are easy to replace. There's a low rubber dome that fits right through the lid. Drilling the steel lids for non-perforated meter lids is a line item because of the cost. You either replace the lid with a perforated lid or you drill your existing lids. A lot of people choose to go with the latter. That takes some time and effort, but it's all part of the contract process.
Anybody else? Do we have a public hearing scheduled for the 11th?
That is, that's Tuesday, correct?
It is Tuesday.
I'm just going to put it out there right now, but I have a very hard time just, I don't really see the return on investment. I mean, we'll get some additional revenue from people that currently are being under billed that get that. But it, I mean, it's nice, but we, and the man hours sound impressive. They actually put it into dollars and cents, and it's not, it's a very negative return on investment overall. Right, and it does, it does help people if they have a leak. But I mean, from, to that end, we could set aside 50 grand and say, that's our insurance budget. People that have a leak and they can verify, we'll come to check for their water leak. We can save hundreds of thousands of dollars as a community, so. I like it. I like data. I like having all those numbers, but is it worth a million? $1.3 million because it's also 190,000 in interest, so $1.3 million. For something that's nice, it's really nice, but where's the, where's the benefit to the town people of them when they have a leak?
Well, I guess, I look beyond just return on investment. I don't think, I think there is a benefit in terms of customer service, in terms of what we can provide to the users if there is a problem. And to be able to accumulate that kind of data, I think is a great management tool. Not only from the user side of the space, but from the manufacturer's side of the space. In other words, between the production of the water and the use of the water and the kind of data that we, that we can obtain from this kind of system. Plus we're getting it on the ground floor. As we continue to grow, we get the system in place now and we've got the availability for this kind of money. It'll be easy to add on to as we get new development in the town. And you'll have, you know, you'll have a good system in place that's easy to build on to with the initial costs being paid for by some funds that we ordinarily wouldn't have. I mean, I agree. If it would be for the ARPA funding, yeah, we'd have a tough time with that. But with the ARPA funding to balance some of it, and maybe if we wanted to look at taking some additional ARPA funding to pay the loan down, so we might make it, you know, a little easier to adjust and to take. But I really, I think it's a great opportunity. I really do.
I feel like we're going to, whether we do it now, five years, no, 10 years, we're going to have a lot of 100 meters one day. I mean, just, that's where everyone's going to. This could be the opportunity that we have, these, just these funds sitting here. So I just, I see us having it one day. We've been talking about it, I know, for 14, 15 years. We think it's various points. So I think my only inclination would be to maybe put a larger, I mean, we can advertise for a $70,000, but I mean, as much money as we could put down on it, if we could do half, I think, and then spread the rest out over, over around 10 years. And I think it's an opportunity for us to do something that normally, there, normal circumstances, we wouldn't have been able to. We just, we never considered it because it was always, you know, it was a significant expense. And it's still a significant expense, but I think we have a better chance here to pull it off.
Let's see if it added enough value, we would have taken the money out for it before, right? So we took money out for a ball field because we thought it added enough value for it to be worth it for the town. So if it's only when we get free money that we're willing to do it, then it's, it's not that much value. But a finish it, right? Otherwise, we would do it. So that's, and we still have pipes in the ground that need to be, that we know need to be replaced, right? Other infrastructure areas of need that we know need to be done. So is this really the best you've served? I'll stop pushing, but.
No, I hear you. You make a good point. I just, I just happen to think that it is an opportunity to put something in place that we build on.
I like your idea. I think, no idea, but I like your point. That's the thing.
Well, it's, it's important is the idea of it. It's the benefit that we're going to gain in terms of managing the system. And I think you, you will gain a lot of benefit with this additional data. You'll be able to pinpoint issues, not only, again, on the, on the user side and that is kind of help with the management of production side too. You've got that kind of accurate data on a consistent basis.
And leak isolation within our system as well, within our trunk, that's, is a part of that or not?
It's a separate thing. You have to place meters within the distribution line that would then.
Okay, now that was part and parcel to.
No, no, it's, it's just the end. It is not, it is possible, but what you wind up having to do is, it becomes more problematic because if you're, wherever you put them in the distribution system, then you've got to link them up to every meter that is in that distribution system. And the, the way our system is set up, we have a lot of backfeeding so that if there is a break somewhere, we're not completely cutting off an area. So is it possible? Yes. Is it very challenging? Yes.
Well, it'll help. Money we saving labor, but it sounds like we'll be saving that labor forever. That's going to mount up over time.
Yes, sir. The, the ability to allow public work, greater use of the meter readers is something.
As we grow, there'll be another employee we don't have to hire perhaps?
A little delay. As we grow, we probably will need, need some more, but I, I agree with you. It might delay that, that need.
What was it, it was under 20,000 a year, 90 percentage, right? Was it 18, 20? Is that what we talked about that one of the things? I don't recall. Wasn't that ballpark?
We threw some numbers out like that, but I think you, that was basing it. I think what, what staff is saying that not just in labor savings, but the ability to redirect their efforts to areas that need attention too. I don't know you're going to be able, you're not going to be able to quantify it enough to say that right now, but I think you will. You know, how many people we have signed reading meters now?
Two.
Two people. And it takes them, basically, a week.
Five days. Get ready to do six. And with the additions out.
Plus us going back.
With all the addition housing, it may be as many as seven days.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's what, I mean, to me, that is what's the most appealing to me. We're, it's an opportunity to get something in place. It's not just put it in place and that's it. There it is. It's in place and you can add on to it even to the point where, you know, developers, whenever you put a few additions in, it's valuable.
And Joe, to your point, for a reasonable location system, we can add those meters later, the bulk meters on the distribution network. While it doesn't give you exact location, it will tell you an area to search within the Blue Ridge for a leak. And we do, but Steve's right, we do have a lot of loops for service purposes, you know, to keep people supplied. We do have valves on a lot of those lines where we can shut valve those things off. We're going to might still watch that bulk meter on that neighborhood and be like, okay, yeah, there is a leak somewhere right here. Then we can hone in on it. So those are things that we can add later that will provide additional benefits. Instead of paying for certain leak detection all over town, you can focus your efforts in individual neighborhoods and get some savings there too.
Well, this system operates off the same system in terms of retrieving the information.
Yep.
Once that system's in place, you could add.
How many leases, customer lease do we have a month where we give bill adjustments? Yep, I, I know that, I don't know if you have that on hand, but obviously it is to obtain that. And then I know you have to kind of filter through the weeds of that, I'm sure. Ballpark.
Do you, do you remember last time that you?
It varies, um, I mean, you could have fifteen adjustments, you might have a big tree, it just depends.
So it's typically somewhere in that range of per month?
Right.
Fifteen, ten to go there, or something like that?
Probably.
Those are the ones we know about.
Yes.
I, I think, like Terry and then found out, there's a lot more out there that we don't know about. And the installation of a leak detection that measures in pence of a gallon will tell you that, they, they're leaking, that they may not know it, but they're leaking in, in here's wire, and here's, here's hot. So, I think Stanley was surprised that they got twenty pages of follow-ups, uh, you know, on leaking meters the first time they ran the system, so. And one other thing, how much benefit, or how many troubleshooting issues do we catch by actually lifting the lid up and checking the meters physically? Because that was one other thing, Googling around, some municipalities said we kind of have to fit that shoe, wearing that back in once a year or biannually, because it's it's important to get a visual on that. We see, we'll, we'll see some things, you know, especially we're forced to now, because that's the only way for us to see the leak detection. And like Terry says, you're gonna go out and verify those nineteen pages, you're gonna turn light on, bring that thing up to life when the symbol comes on. So, if you do get that, you'll be out there physically, also for cutoffs and reconnects, we'll physically add those meters, cut those things off, locking them or, you know, cutting it back on. So we will be doing some physical visits to meters all over town. Will we miss some things? Maybe. Did, did we find a lot of issues? Mostly, our issues are on the customer side, not on our side, and those meters are gonna tell us those issues anyway, so.
But they, they do happen on our side occasionally, but like Brian said, they're much more infrequent than, than being on the customer side.
Sure, there's a little cheap toilet plug in there. Yeah, yeah, our plumbing's usually fairly good up to the meter, and if it's not, uh, we'll see a wet spot on the road or along the side of the road. There'll, there'll be a lot.
So leak protection isn't that much of a problem?
Leak protection, especially in winter time, you'll see that thing, it'll freeze up right there, so.
Well, leak detectors are on meters now, I mean, I think, they can pick up.
When you have a good one.
When you've got a good sign.
A fairly good leak, yeah.
That'll be a fairly good sign.
Alright, anybody else on this session? Alright, we'll move along together, public hearing is scheduled for October eleventh to Tuesday. Alright, Mr. Burke?
Uh, yes, sir. Again, for consideration at your October meeting, uh, the Regional Commission offers on-call engineering contracts, and the town would like to make use of those on-call contracts to facilitate engineering, construction engineering services for the Memorial Drive Corridor Improvement Project and the Luray Landing Sewer Lift Station Project. Both of those, we would request, uh, use of RACI Engineering. With the anticipated engineering service costs being about seventy-nine thousand dollars for the Memorial Drive Project and two-hundred-eighty-six thousand dollars for the Luray Landing Project. In addition, we'll incur about a twenty-five-hundred-dollar fee from the Regional Commission for each of those projects. And those costs will be built into those project total costs.
Discussion and questions on those?
So we'll continue to use RACI, we'll just be doing it under the Regional Commission?
Yes, sir, so that we don't have to put out an individual bid for, for construction services for both of those. That was the, the point that the Regional Commission has, this is that it, it expedites the ability of, of localities to acquire these services.
Anybody else on the session? Mr. Burke, keep going.
Yes, sir. Council's requested, uh, at your October meeting to consider a proclamation of appreciation to George Comer for his recent donation of some photographs, a Civil War-era sword, a Civil War-era spur, an antique mercury glass vase, a D.H. Hankel Stoneman Stoneler jar, and a George Pollack Skyland bench. We've accepted all of these and, and will request council's formal acceptance of these, as well as, uh, as you go forward in your ARPA consideration, potentially buying a, a display case for the front entryway so that we can display these and any other items that may be donated in the future, as well as just cycling in some of the photographs that we have, not only for Mr. Comer, but from other folks. The bench, um, was, based on the information from Mr. Comer, was part of the Skyland Resort up at the National Park. And we're hoping that we'll be able to incorporate that into the Train Depot display in the near future as well.
Very nice donation. That Hankel pod is quite a, we have no price for that. Uh, Steve, are they, is he a family, will he come to the, he's, he's still with us, right? Mr. Comer is still?
Well, he actually lives in South Carolina. His family owned, uh, property out in, in the Stoneman area. But their, uh, his, his father had, had passed away, and he's been going through all of those items. That's what's led to him donating the, the photographs of some of these, as well as some of these items. He's also donated a number of photographs and other items to Shenandoah for the museum that they've established. And he's just looking to make sure that the, the historical significance of, of his family's presence is, is reported in Page County.
Yes, my question is, can we get him here for the proclamation, or is he, just show it every now and then?
Yes, actually, when he dropped this off, um, he and his wife were on their way to New England for an extended tour, uh, visit up there. So I, I will, I will definitely make them aware of the, the October meeting, um, but I don't believe that he'll be able to. But I'll, I will let him know that anytime that he's in, if he can make it to a meeting, we'd love to have him.
The race meeting is scheduled. Alright, thank you, Steve. Any discussion on that? Alright, Mr. Burke, keep going.
Yes, sir. Another public hearing for your October meeting will be a, a special use permit through Two Way Avenue to operate a lodging house in the Boone Field R four district from Harbor Holding Company. Uh, the planning commission conducted their public hearing at their September meeting and unanimously recommended approval of the application with the conditions noted in here.
Council, any thoughts on that, any discussion?
Let's see, they put this, SGP should not transfer parts of the property, which I think is a probably a good policy, especially with these ones in residential areas. If it is transferred, I mean, this person might do a fine job, but if it's sold, they just can come back in. So I think that's a good policy to do for the most part here on out.
Anybody else on that? Hey, Steve, you still up?
Yes, sir. Uh, next item is the Acre Spring Greenway Extension. RACI is nearing completion of their preliminary engineering and environmental report for that. Copies of those reports are included in your, in your packet. Basically, they have developed an alignment, a proposed alignment for the, um, the Greenway that will take it from the end of the loop, crossing Oxville Creek, and then taking us up past the existing dam for the, the spring, and then terminating up at the Acre Spring property. We are most likely, the, the, the hope is, is that once the, this preliminary design is complete, RACI will develop a proposal for the completion of design plans and permitting for this project, so that we can then find funding for that, and then allow, allow them to complete that. And then, that would further the Greenway Foundation's opportunities to pursue both donations and grants for other opportunities for funding. Uh, the, the foundation is, is working hard to identify a number of opportunities, however, they do, uh, tend to want shovel-ready projects for the, the, the grants that they're looking at. And so, completion of the design plans would allow them greater flexibility in, in pursuing those, those higher-dollar grants. One of the other items that, that came out of their pursuit of grants was a discussion with the Shenandoah Valley Battlefields Foundation. The foundation has had communication with the, the foundation and the town. One of the items that, uh, they have suggested consideration of would be for the town to build Nate the property, the, the Acre Spring property north of the spring to the foundation, and then the foundation could then partner with the, the Battlefield Foundation to develop and operate that park. The Battlefield Foundation is responsible for the operation of a number of Battlefield parks throughout Virginia and, I believe, North Carolina. And what they've indicated is that, uh, they've got the expertise on putting together the, the displays, putting together any improvements necessary to maintain the buildings and structures in those areas. They would most likely request, um, consideration by the town to partner with the mowing. They simply just don't have enough staff to, to do that to the, the level of expectations that we would have. So that's just one item that could be considered by the town as far as assisting the Greenway Foundation with the development of the park at the end of this trail.
So they want us to donate the parcel that's adjacent to the?
With the buildings.
With the buildings, they, they want us to donate the entire parcel, other than the, the?
Well, everything south, we, we would retain, it's only the areas where the, uh, business office and the house.
The old house that, uh, or?
Correct, and, and where the, the foundry used to be. That way, they could, uh, potentially develop the, the interactive park for folks of visit.
And they maintain the buildings as well as manage the exhibits in the buildings and all of that?
Yes, sir. They would, they, they can maintain the grounds, however, they just don't have the staff to, to, to do it as frequently as, as expected in, in a, in a park facility.
I mean, we would have some, I would assume a lot of the displays and building would be relevant, relevant to the, the, uh, the actual site itself, not the, unless the, uh, Battlefield's.
No, and, and that is, they, they, they did explain that while their name is Battlefield's, it's anything historical from the establishment of the nation up through the Civil War. And the foundry falls within that, the purview of, of their organization and that their efforts to explore and promote that historical significance.
Steve, is this a gentleman that lived with, uh, thirty-six months ago?
Yes.
Was there some financial gain for us to donate the property?
Yes, sir, the, the, the benefit if the town were to, to donate all of the property, not only just the area where the homes were, but the several hundred acres below that, as well as everything associated with the, the Greenway. The town, well, the Greenway Foundation might net ninety thousand dollars. And we both agreed that, that, in, in the scale of the, the cost for this project, it, it wouldn't benefit the town or the foundation to, to pursue that.
From the standpoint of relinquishing control, or what?
Well, effectively, and, yes, sir, uh, the, the, the benefit, the, the, then it benefit, yes, we might realize that, that ninety thousand dollars, and that was the, the upward limit. There's, uh, the, the process would be that the town would have to donate all of it to the foundation. The foundation would then have to work through, uh, a donation to the foundation, and then the foundation would have to work through some organization in Virginia to then sell the tax credits to a business. So, the, the realization of that ninety, that the ninety thousand dollar was the, the top level, that you thought it would be anywhere from thirty to ninety thousand. And it all depended on the market at the time for those tax credits and.
They want the prairie area as well?
If, if you have to donate all of it.
How big is that parcel that sits on to a hundred acres?
The acres? It's a little greater than a hundred acres, I believe, but I don't know, I can't recall off the top of my head. Um, do you know, Brian?
It's not a hundred acres.
It's not?
It's not a hundred? No. Okay. Yeah, it's, uh, right around twenty-six.
I don't know why I thought of that. We've got a couple somewhat complex, uh, ways to go with it, didn't he, Steve? I mean, he, he, he's very interested, he wants to spend, he says that they not spend any money in Page County. He says, but, but, like CJ, it's not the Battlefield Foundation, he's very eager to spend money in Page County, but he is, there's, yeah, well. But, uh, yeah.
Want to meet?
It's still a whole book reader. So, I mean, we get into this meeting, of course, we'll come back, I think.
Yes, sir, we can do that. And part of the discussion had been that if, if the foundation did proceed with initial development of that park, that may also, uh, improve the likelihood of the Greenway Foundation getting a grant, because there is a destination park at the end of the Greenway Extension. So, um, anyway, it, it was a good conversation to, to try and, and come up with opportunities to, to help both the, the Greenway Foundation and the Battlefield Foundation.
And they currently have funding that would support the development of the park for that area?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. He said, I, he, he gave us a number, I can't recall, but, um, like the mayor said, historic, I, they've not had a, a, a project in Page County. And so this would be a, a win for the Battlefield Foundation, because they've got, uh, projects all up and down the valley, just not in Page.
Right, right, yeah, but they, but they do have more funds for projects in Page?
Yes, they, they are, uh, they are not a federal organization, but they are a federally created organization that receives federal funding annually.
And the Page funding was an issue, didn't it?
No.
Six months ago.
Steve, how is any of this still Acre Spring?
Well, uh.
That's our water supply, right?
It, it, it's a future water supply, it's, but it, it generates anywhere from eight to nine million gallons a day. And, so that was part of the discussion of the town retaining ownership of the spring and then the property to the south, so that if we ever needed to build facilities to treat and distribute the water, we would have that land. If we were, we, we talked about potentially donating the other open area, but then it becomes complicated. You can't put new development on Battlefield Foundation property without a lot of effort. So that's where the conversation went to, uh, okay, if we give you just the area that would be the park, then it, it would work to the benefit of everyone. So, uh, also, part of the project that we're looking at with RACI, right now, the dam is in, uh, it's as old a dam as, as you'll find in, in Virginia and needs repairs. The expectation is that this walkway would be across a replacement dam, if you will, that would give us greater opportunities to, um, raise and lower the water level for, for future maintenance, as well as give the users the ability to, to look out across the spring. So, the, the, the plan is, is that the Greenway would, would facilitate people walking, enjoying the, the, the spring. And then, the, the found, the Greenway Foundation's hope is to develop the park to explain what was going on at, at the furnace in the early eighteen.
You've reassured me that we're not trying to give away the spring or anything to do with it.
Yes, sir, no, the, the intent would be that we would keep, we would retain all of this property.
Okay.
And then, everything up where the houses were, the buildings, that would be the area that we would discuss donating to the, to the Battlefield's.
It's exciting.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So long we thought about going, you know, toward the Ralph Dean, which made sense, but now this has kind of come up, this seems to make even more sense. You know, so.
I say we control, we should, we control all the property.
Yeah, I mean, definitely.
Now, Brian has developed a, a funding opportunity in twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six that might facilitate some of the sidewalk construction or the, the trailer construction.
To the park.
To the park.
So we might be able to take care of that through transportation alternative.
Alright.
Plan from First Street going out to the rec park, and then First Street to Third, Third Street to the parking area, and then up Ninth Avenue to Village Place. So, uh, to her, so then it would all be, the Boone Field would be interconnected, uh, to the rec park, to the schools, and to the East of the Shop. So to her, so then it would all be, the boom field would be interconnected to the rec park, to the schools, and to the East River Chalk.
Oh, okay.
Trailways.
Then again, that is twenty-five, twenty-six, but we are at least trying to put into place the mechanism to make that a reality.
Steve, can we do some repairs to the dam where they like recently?
Well, we have to do something now. There is a leak there and Brian and Jennifer are talking with our dam expert to fix that dam, dam.
So without the dam, there would be no, on there, right?
Correct.
Would it change the atmosphere over there?
And we do, we do want to fix it because it is part of the historical aspect of that whole stuff.
All right, Steve, is anybody else on that? Ring mic extension. Hi, Steve.
Again, this is just a continuation of the previous discussion of our code amendment draft for the black properties and derelict buildings. I don't know that we've obtained any additional information since we had this discussion at your September regular meeting. The information included in your packet included the updated property matrix, as well as the cost estimates of basic, using a couple of sample properties. The improvements costs, as well as what the abated tax amounts would be to the individual property owners.
Looks like it's changed to ten years from fifteen.
It is fifteen years because the state requires us to.
Okay, so once it's to ten, that's highlighted. Or a page, four. At the ordinance, three pages, page seven, eight, has to, page four.
Oh, because this was, that is something that needs to be updated. Yes, sir. That's why, I think that's why it was updated, it's highlighted, that needs to be fifteen.
Yes, sir. So it didn't change from fifteen?
No, sir.
So is there anything, what are we, what are we looking for before we just move it back?
Again, just getting council comfortable, the net benefit is it gives the town the opportunity to work with some of the property owners that would not otherwise, have not otherwise made improvements to their properties. Part of what we're looking to do would be that matrix establishes some of the criteria. I think arriving at what is the appropriate number of points before the council would take action. I think the higher it goes, the more justified the town is in pursuing action. So somewhere above a hundred points, possibly two hundred, two hundred and fifty points, based on the accumulation of points that a property can accrue. Would, I think that's one of the things that we do need to finalize before we go forward with adoption of this ordinance. Part of the concern that staff has is, once we go forward with this, is making sure that the threshold is not so low that everybody and their brother is saying, you know, pick on my neighbor. We really do want to make this program so that it is, it is intended for the worst of the worst, if you will. And then what we have to do is get council comfortable with the fact that we may not get a response from some of the properties. And at that point, that's when, if the town wanted to do something, it would be on our dime to pursue some kind of remediation. And there's, there is a process that we have to work through. We can't simply fix up a building to the point of habitation. There's limits on what we can do. We can board windows. If there's trees and whatnot growing through there, we can go through and make it presentable, but it won't be moving ready. So it's a program that will hopefully make things more attractive, but it won't solve the derelict problem, unfortunately.
Well, we can get in and clean it up and stabilize it, we need to. That probably says it much, like that gentleman that was in here. It's all run over. If you went in and just cleaned it up, removed debris, I guess we send in the bill to, right?
We put the lien on the property.
I think that's probably, because I would imagine a lot of folks, you're not going to hear anything wrong, especially the ones that are in the extreme. It's funny that those folks will pay the property taxes and keep huffing it, I mean, so.
So, I mean, if we're going to move it forward by the end of the year, I mean, I've sent in, I have to budget some money for the program itself.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Again, what, part of what working with or talking with other communities, they retain engineering firms to go in and do an inspection, again, to confirm that any pursuit of action is warranted. So yes, sir, there would need to be funding for the program as well as funding for potential, to pay for improvements before we place the lien on the property.
It's not insignificant.
Unfortunately, no, sir. So it's just going in recognizing all of the issues. There's definite benefits to adopting the program, but there's definite costs that we've got to just be aware of going forward. So if, I mean, if council is comfortable, we could probably advertise this for your November meeting for a public hearing.
Could you maybe just take a wild guess at some budget?
There you go. It depends. Hopefully, we would only be, in my mind, if we were to adopt this, we would continue to work through our normal code enforcement that we've been doing on properties, mowing grass, cutting down trees. When it gets to the level of a truly derelict building that's got broken windows, it has people that are accessing the building illegally, that would allow, pursuing this would put the owner on notice that you have problems. We want you to remedy them. And if they don't, then it would give us the tools to pursue that. Again, I would hope that it would only be two properties per year. Again, the inspection cost would probably be in the five to six thousand dollar range. And then the funding to pursue the improvements would potentially be in the fifty to sixty thousand dollar range, depending on just how bad the properties were.
Steve, I thought this was, since it was an ordinance, we didn't have to have a public hearing, you know, imagine that? I thought Jason mentioned that.
Did he? I'll check.
Is that correct?
I will check on that.
Just for clarification, we've mentioned before about as far as us, the town, having the power to clean up something or, where, are we speaking of a contractor?
Yes, sir.
So, okay, yes, sir. I just want to make sure that we're not taking any of our people or put in that situation.
And from the town's perspective, it's cleaner to contract it out. That way, there's no question as to the cost that goes onto the lien.
That's right. I just want to clarify that.
Yes, sir.
All right, anybody else on that? Hi, Steve, you go?
Yes, sir. Next item is relative to the boundary line adjustments with the Ramsey property, the Fairview Estates. Mr. Ramsey has provided a deed and a copy of the twenty twenty-two real estate tax statement that demonstrates that he owns a portion of Ellis Drive and has been paying taxes to the county. The county did confirm that he has been paying these taxes since about twenty sixteen for Ellis Drive, which would appear to confirm that the connection from Arthur Lane to Ellis Drive is within his ability to approve. The county or the supervisors conducted their public hearing, but did not take action, citing that they would prefer the town to initiate action on this request. So basically that where, where council.
So we're still at the, we're pretty, we're confident it's a private right of.
Yes, sir, based on everything that.
So although he can connect, doesn't mean they can use it, correct?
That was going to be my question, because if he connects, can you cross the rest of it?
So if it's a private right of way, although he can connect to it, that doesn't mean that the owners of these, whoever buys them in Ramsey's, subdivision is going to have the right to use that for ingress and egress.
And again, I will defer until Jason is here, but it's my understanding that Jason's belief is that Ellis Drive, including the portion that Mr. Ramsey claims to own, as well as the area that connects to Antioch, is actually, I forget his term, but has, was dedicated to the county for public use when it was developed.
Now, see, I could be a.
It's not a private right of way if it's open for.
How is it maintained now? How is Ellis Drive maintained?
The owners. I would just have Jason just, you know, tell us what the, he can connect to it. He owns, okay. You know, I guess the question is, is, okay, you can connect to it. Is he able to, the people who potentially live there, can they, they can now use that? Do they join that private road? And also on this, this road that Mr. Ramsey's talking about, and the town that connects, I mean, do we have, if we're going to break this in, do we have an agreement that would, I mean, it's going to be privately, he's proposing to have it privately maintained? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The, I don't know if I included that in this.
It's going to be gravel?
Yeah, the pre-annexation agreement that is included in the, basically states that it will be a private road maintained by the Fairview Homeowners Association. But it will, it will remain, it won't be asphalt. It would, as, as proposed, no, sir, it'll be gravel.
I was thinking about what Mr. Cave, Brian, did out on the, in the boom field. I mean, he did it slowly. Is that, is that, are those built to state standards now?
Yeah, that was an already planted public street that was accepted by law. So it was a little bit different because part of his re-subdivision request, the plaintiff makes recommend the council approve that one of those requirements would be, at the end of the project, he would have to pave that street, and he did that.
So in that same context, then, since this was an established subdivision, we really did, did we have an avenue to require him to pave it? I guess we did.
Without it being a.
Without going through a subdivision process?
Correct. Now, his expectation is that he would rezone it and then subdivide the fourteen lots in the county to twenty-eight lots for duplex construction. That might be an opportunity for the town to pursue that.
Unless he has to do it all at once, but if you have a plan, so if you have to come in here and rezone that.
Yes, sir. It would come into the town as R one, and he wants to rezone it to, I believe, R two or R three. And I believe that, yeah, there is, that upon execution of the agreement, he would, he would submit an application to R three zoning that would allow him to pursue the subdivision for duplexes.
Okay, well, maybe that's a town that we can talk about, because that is a private ground, those lots are already established.
The fourteen lots are already.
Back to the connection to Ellis Drive, I think, depending on what Jason says. I think we're just asking for trouble to be allowed to connect into it and the people then, and it is truly a private right of way and it's not open to public use. Might have some issues there, I think.
I've been out there, I went out there last week as well. What's odd, the connection is already there. This goes through and actually connects to Ellis Drive. Gravel where it connects looks as if it's been there for some time, but I think it's just an assumption. What it looks like is, this was once like a farm entrance. So this property that's had purchase prior to it being developed, that was just a access into a farm.
It was.
You know, and now that it's developed, we're talking about it becoming a street. And now the street connecting to Ellis, and I think it is complicated as to whether, and not that we would approve or could approve, but legally that. See, I can, those property owners now, you know, it's a subdivision, going up to that private ground.
I'm assuming, again, I'm sure.
Well, I think it makes sense that it connects there.
Well, I think it makes sense too.
But it makes sure.
Is everyone in agreement?
Right, that it can indeed do that, that does, that they can use that. I think maybe Jason, I know he's pretty thorough with these things.
He is, and what he's been trying to elicit, we've been trading emails with the county. Because this is all in the county, his opinion is valid to us. We're trying, we've asked the county for their attorney's opinion on the connection and access. We haven't received that yet, but that is, Jason, Jason has his opinion and I trust that, but he is trying to get the county attorney to, or, to, yes, to at least vocalize whether it is or isn't acceptable.
They have people arguing on the roads, right of ways, droughtways all the time, so.
That's why we want to ask.
I've heard it all, so make sure we get it right.
All right, so we want to wait till we hear from Jason to get the conclusion. All right, go ahead, Steve.
I believe this is the final item for the evening, is just continued ARPA discussion. Again, as I mentioned earlier, there's a few things that staff would request council's consideration for, the remote water meters. I'll get back to first night. And then the display case, we've got costs for those. First night is becoming a little more complicated. We've heard from Cal that they are not interested in participating this year. LBI is interested, but would not have people to assist with it. So we're trying to figure out if we would have enough staff to do anything. And if we were to do anything, we would be looking to do more of a end of year celebration from six to eight, seven to nine, to be more family friendly. What we've also learned is that Winchester is no longer doing their first night event. And a few of the other communities are moving away from that. So our, if we pursue that, it would probably be an earlier, just end of the year celebration. And I don't know that we'll have enough time or staffing to actually make it a reality this year, but we're continuing that discussion. But again, the remote re-water meters and then the display case would be two items that we would, in addition to those other items that staff had previously presented. And then council had discussed developing the grant program for either businesses or nonprofits. And we included the original CARES Act program that the town had developed for your review and consideration to go forward as we will.
That worked pretty well from the staff's perspective.
Yes, sir. The benefit of the CARES Act program was they basically gave us the format and requested information. So that's what we translated into the application. And it did seem to work well. It gave us information. There had been some questions as to the extent of tax return, profit and loss information that would be submitted from the not-for-profits. But those that participated were, did provide us the information we needed for council's consideration of an award.
The council, the council.
You know, I, yeah, I think, I'd like to say it's moved over to meters, but still for discussion. Any others that know this?
Well, thanks, man. This is a good way to, I mean, I, I think it's, I think we just need to, secure in favor of the meters, which I would be, is how much on this gray side do we pull? I see one fifty, two fifty for water line replacements, water line, we're relying on that, you know, maybe make a decision. Forego that to put an electric, as a down payment on the meters, and that would be four hundred thousand. And large equipment storage shed. I don't really know what that is, but I think there is potential here to grab. A person that can chump down on the meters, so some other things could be funded, so. Wait, on the side of night.
I would identify on the, the left side, the non-shaded, about a third of the way down, electric meter, down payment of three hundred thousand.
Oh, that's already in there?
It's, it's provided, and, and so there is room for adjustment in council.
I mean, we can much add more to it.
Add more to it from the gray side. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I said, okay, I didn't see that, yeah. I would be in favor of adding.
He took the two hundred. I mean, I'm not, the large equipment shed is, I mean, that's something we could do. I mean, we could probably manage it in, in, in the future, in the future of that two hundred.
Two hundred, five hundred thousand.
Be five hundred thousand down on the, on the meters. I, I mean, I don't know. Tell me about the equipment shed. Is that something?
I thought that that was in the current operational list for this year.
The equipment shed.
I think it was divided three ways between general fund, water fund, and sewer fund. I, I think that that one might already be incorporated in our, our operational list.
Well, there you go.
Let me, let me pull.
What, half a million dollars? I could buy a splash pad.
Hope the water doesn't leak someday.
Hope the water, maybe.
Actually, that's just like. A pretty good tool, obsolete.
She has to come?
Well, we can, we can.
Yeah, we'll check on it.
Yeah, we'll check.
But there, there is, again, I, I, I believe, I believe we've got the potential to allow the house some flexibility as far as how much we put down it. To be honest with you, the way that we structured the public hearing, as well as the loan, again, the, the maximum is three, is seven fifty, so we've got to get the bids to hopefully be where we expect them to be. And that, again, may adjust, we may wind up having to put a little more money down just because of the seven fifty number. But the, the expectation is that if we can lock in on the terms with Lew Ridge Bank, that we won't be affected by any of the future increases to the interest rate. And that would then allow us to pursue putting it out to bid and getting you true numbers from firms to, to go forward.
So we advertise a seven fifty, far less than the council.
Yes, yes, sir.
All three, that large equipment storage building was all backed out of all three funds in Darpa.
Where's that located?
We haven't picked a location yet, but we'd like the building right across Bank Street from where the existing building is. We'd inquire that property from the current owner, but if not, we would use town property somewhere.
All right, anybody else on our funds? All right, Steve, is all you have?
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of things. Again, those, we are making our final payment to Law Ridge Community College. Is that correct, Daniel? I should say it's a gone by Cleveland. Four or five years old.
Yeah, it was a four-year commitment. There was a fifth year effectively, but we, we did not receive the connection fees for that. So that was, there's technically a five-year commitment, so one year's connection for contribution.
I have a letter I want to read, Mayor Dopp, under the Blue Ridge Town Council. Most buildings on Main Street are old with many infrastructure problems which also reflected deferred maintenance over the decades. Our building at Twenty West Main Street is no exception, even though we've invested thousands of dollars in its improvement. Last week, Twenty West Main and Broad Porch Coffee suffered a sewer pipe issue and closed our business for several days. What could have turned into a very serious problem was saved by the town employees. We had hired another firm to fix the sewer issue, but Brian Christman, Lynn Matthews, and their crews were instrumental in helping us understand the problem and find a solution. Without them, Broad Porch Coffee would have been closed for much longer. We may not have been open during a very busy day weekend. Since this is a Main Street business and building owner, we want to thank the town for their continuing support and advice and help. We're happy to talk to any prospective buyer or business about investing in Blue Ridge, emphasize the support the town gives us. Jay Edmond and Ryan Tots, fellow Red Bull Porch Coffee.
Nice job.
All right, thank you all. Make sure.
It was mostly, huh?
Thank you guys for what you do.
Yeah, absolutely. That is very nice, too.
Anybody here, anything else?